I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting of the Dunn County Board of Supervisors to order. We will start, as always, with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, for God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If the clerk will call the roll.
Supervisor Lawfer is present. Supervisor Breslin?
Here.
Is here. Supervisor Headland is here. Supervisor Score is here. Supervisor Steen is here. Supervisor Shackleton is present. Supervisor Gary Bjork is here. Supervisor Willsey?
Here.
Running us online? Okay. Supervisor Quinn is here. Supervisor Jetson is here. Supervisor Bishan is here. Supervisor Kinnear is excused. Supervisor Barrier is here. Supervisor Calabrese is here. Supervisor Lyon is here. Supervisor Vogel is here. Supervisor Story?
Online as well.
Online. Supervisor Vandermeulen. Supervisor is here. Supervisor Burnt is here. Supervisor Morehouse is here. Supervisor Hagan is here. Supervisor Thomas is present. Supervisor Prochnow is here. Supervisor Gilbert is present. Supervisor Larry Bjork still here. Supervisor Bauer is here. Supervisor Wolf is present. Supervisor Hartong is here. And Chair McCullough.
Here.
It's here.
Oh, yes. Approval of the minutes. I would need a motion in a second. Supervisor Steen moves. Supervisor Wolf seconds. Any speaking to the minutes? All right. Seeing none. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Presentations of petitions, memorials, and other communications. I should have gotten this last month, but condolences to Ron Score on the death of his father. Onto public comment. Just two small pieces of errata without any objection. I'm going to move the race way up in our agenda so that all of these people who've turned out for that can leave earlier and not have to sit through our entire meeting. Any objections? Supervisor Larry Bjork.
I'm, and I don't think you have to. Well, here's what, here's what upsets me. We have people that come in and they speak to an issue and they even hand you almost 500 signatures to bring something forward to the board and you don't do it. And I hate to see them sit through the whole thing, but I think it'd be a little educational to see, well, how they make the sausage and where the dollars and cents come from or where they don't come from. And if you look at item nine, reports of departments, you've got facilities. Could could we have the Fair Board or the Racing Association there under the facilities and let them see what's involved in this budget stuff? I've got a brochure here that we probably got, what, three months ago? And I just don't think that administration is really giving the public a fair shake and giving them a minute or two to speak their piece and then nothing happens. So, you know, I'm not wildly objective to it. I see kids here, you know.
So Supervisor Bjork, is that an objection or not?
It is an objection, sir.
All right. You're all here for a while then.
Oh, pardon me. You cannot go to item nine?
You've objected to moving the agenda.
I asked the agenda to be moved to number nine.
So you would like to see, yes, racing. That was what I was trying to do, Supervisor Bjork, was move the racing items forward so that these people could get home earlier.
Fine.
But are you withdrawing your objection?
I am asking you if we can have the racing discussion on item number nine instead of on the back of the page.
I had intended to move the racing discussion ahead of the report of the county manager to allow people more time.
Well, I'll withdraw my objections and I'm just disappointed that after the public states their feelings on a particular item, that that's the last we hear of it.
Thank you, Supervisor Bjork.
So withdraw my objection.
All right. Public comment?
We have several people signed up for public comment. We'll do them in order in which they were signed up. First is John Johnson and on deck after that will be Zach Shackleton.
And please state your name and address and you've got three minutes.
All right. My name is John Johnson, E 3135 550th Avenue, Menominee, lifelong Dunn County resident. Good evening, folks. I am the Red Cedar Speedway president. I've been in this position for three years. I'm involved with the board, have been for almost eight now, and I've been a Red Cedar Speedway fan all my life. This 10-year contract is a huge step for us because it's not only saving the county, the track, and extra planning and prep and paperwork for both of us. It provides more longevity for the Red Cedar Speedway to seek larger sponsors and plan more in-depth upgrades to make our facility better. We've made a lot of great improvements to date. We've helped close to 40 fundraiser groups just this year alone. And I believe we have a better working relationship with not only the Fair Board, but with the Facilities Department than we probably ever have. Red Cedar Dirt Track Racing has been a huge part of our community since the early 70s and it continues to be today. I ask that you strongly consider a yes vote for our 10-year contract to help us continue the valued tradition for the future to come. Thanks.
Thank you.
Zach Shackleton, followed by Lacy O'Connell. And Lacy, if you want to come up, so you're ready.
My name is Zach Shackleton. My address is E 5856 800th Avenue. I am here to encourage the board to extend the contract to the Red Cedar Speedway for 10 more years. I have raced go-karts at Thunder Hill Speedway for a few years and I would like to hopefully someday race at Red Cedar Speedway. This track has been a big part of my family and I look forward to coming to this track every week in the summer to watch the races. I have lots of friends that come to this track as well and I would appreciate you voting to extend the contract. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next.
Lacy, followed by Brent Creaser. Crezer, sorry.
My name is Lacy O'Connell. I own Lakeview Floral at 1802 Stout Road. Our backyard borders the racetrack and I've been there for 18 years. It's been great neighbors to me. They always check in to make sure that, like, we don't have a problem with trash and we don't. They're a great neighbor. I want to keep them for another 10 years. As a lifelong Menominee resident, the races have just been part of the culture of town. And when I bought my property, I knew there was a racetrack in my backyard. And I know that that comes with a little bit of dirt and it comes with a little bit of light and a little bit of noise. But it smells like summer and sounds like summer in Menominee to us. So I ask the board to please consider a yes vote to extend the contract for the racetrack.
Thank you.
Brent, followed by Jimmy Mars.
Hello, Brent Creaser, E 5660 507th Avenue, Menominee. Good evening, Dunn County Board of Supervisors. Thank you for the opportunity to speak about one of my most favorite places to go each and every Friday night throughout the summer. Since I was about four, I have attended races for now 34 years and I could probably count on one hand the amount of races that I have missed at the Red Cedar Speedway. Red Cedar Speedway has brought affordable family fun to town for 52 years now. People from not only near, but very far away attend each and every one of our events. And when I say far, I mean far. For example, this season, one driver came from Thunder Bay, Ontario, Canada, a short six-hour trip that he made several times. Those would probably not even know where Menominee was, let alone visit, without the Red Cedar Speedway. I work closely with the national touring series that have been at the Speedway along with their drivers that travel all over the country to racetracks and they compliment us on what a beautiful, well-maintained facility that we have. We are truly blessed here in Menominee. Our team works hard to grow our product. Just a few fun facts about the Red Cedar Speedway this past season. In 2024, the Red Cedar Speedway had 121 marketing partners. Businesses in town and outside of town see the value they are getting with their advertising dollars with the Speedway. Our Kids Club in 2024 had an all-time record of 421 kid members. All members get a shirt, a goodie bag, fill the coupons from our local businesses, and are eligible to win a great prize at the end of, at the end of, at the end of the night each week that they attend our events. Our 44th Annual Punky Manor Challenge of Champions, which we just wrapped up a few weeks ago, had 2,600 people in attendance, which brings a major economic impact to our town. Weekly, we employ around 30 or 40 people on race nights and we are a very charitable organization and we give back to many different community groups. We also donate to many benefits throughout the year. As I mentioned prior, we promote our business to families. We have affordable admission. Kids 12 and under are free. We have affordable concessions and we're welcome everyone. Running a racetrack may seem like an easy task, but planning for next season starts right now. It takes a great group, which we have. It takes great drivers, which we have. Takes great fan support, which we have. And it also takes a great marketing support, which we also have. Finally, I ask you to please support the new 10-year lease agreement for the Red Cedar Race Association and keep the auto racing dream alive for many years to come that my grandfather and his friends started 52 years ago. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Jimmy Mars, followed by Steve Sunby.
Hi, my name is Jimmy Mars, N 5471 648th Street, Menominee, Wisconsin. Some of this might sound a little redundant. We all have a big passion, supporters of the racetrack. So our speeches might sound very similar, but hey, that's the way it's going to be here. So anyway, hi, I'm Jimmy Mars. I proudly have lived in Dunn County, Menominee area my entire life. We have started and grown our successful business, Mars Racing in Dunn County. We are proud supporters of Red Cedar Speedway along with businesses, organizations, and events that take place in Dunn County. For over 50 years, Red Cedar Speedway has been an active member of Dunn County. The Speedway has many unique benefits that are extremely important to Dunn County and the city of Menominee. We have a high economic impact for businesses from spectators across Midwest and beyond, from our hotels, restaurants, to our downtown area, gas stations, and grocery stores. Race fans are notoriously loyal to the communities that support racetracks and in return, they happily spend money in their community throughout the weekends and our special events. It's a safe place for kids to spend their Friday nights with friends. I can say that myself because I've been going to the races along with Brent, five, six years old. It's one big, one big family at the racetrack and children and their families are welcome to Speedway through our kids program. This year, more than 400 children signed up through the program and the Speedway worked with more than 20 local businesses in and around Menominee to make their nights at the racetrack memorable for kids. It's been, it's become a popular gathering place, both for businesses and race fans to interact with each other face-to-face. In a world where that's become rare, race fans, businesses, and local leaders have come together at race, at the racetrack where they have shared enthusiasm for not just motorsports, but enjoying an evening out with fellow community members. We all have vested interests in making Menominee and Dunn County a great place to live, work, and do, do business, and it's become a real community get-together. The racetrack donates to many charities and fundraisers throughout our community. We understand it's important to give back to our communities that supports us. In recent years, our race car raffle has resulted in thousands of dollars for local organizations like Menominee Youth Hockey, Menominee Youth Baseball. We also hold special nights throughout the season that benefit local nonprofits. This race car has actually been, gave people a dream come true to actually participate at the racetrack. So it's pretty, been pretty cool. Many, many relationships, both personal and business, have been created through our Speedway. Now, the topic of race cars.
Please vote. Thank you. Sorry about that.
Steve Sunby, followed by Steve Hansen.
Good evening. I'm Steve Sunby, E 5458 770th Avenue, Menominee. I'm here, I'm here on behalf of Midwest Food and Tobacco Group in Menominee. I'm the general manager. We've been a longtime marketing partner with Red Cedar Speedway. I've been involved with Midwest Food and Tobacco Group for 30 years and we've been involved every year that I've been there. So it's, it's, it's important for everybody to recognize the economic impact that the Speedway has on this community, on the county. And also, it's been mentioned before about the loyalty that race fans have. And it's unbelievable to see the support that these racers, the fans that come, give the sponsors, and a lot of the sponsors and marketing partners with the Speedway are also local and part of this community as well. So it's just a nice never-ending cycle of supporting each other and I ask that you guys vote yes to support the contract. Thanks.
Thanks so much.
Steve Hansen, followed by Casey Sorenson. Okay. No, just kidding, Steve. All right, Ms. Sorenson, you're up.
Hello, Carissa Sorenson, 1307 Wilcox Street, Menominee. And I've been a lifelong, lived in Menominee, South Menominee, and now North Menominee for over 20 years. We've spent time on our patio with our windows open in the summer and in the evenings with no disturbance from the racetrack sounds. We do attend the racetrack Speedway with our sons and have taken interest in racing, helping on the crews and also supporting local teams. These events bring tourism and revenue to Menominee. That's a big plus for retail stores, hotels, restaurants, and they look forward to these big event weekends. Living in North Menominee, I can tell you the sound from the interstate and trains passing through is more disturbing than the Speedway. Red Cedar Speedway has respected the time ordinance in Menominee on Friday and Saturday nights so all people involved can continue to enjoy the racetrack. Please vote yes. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks, Carissa. Michael Denny, followed by Tammy Simon.
Michael Denny from E 59 490th Avenue here in Menominee, also from Culvers, 1330 Stout Road. So hopeful that all of you will consider voting yes on this. At our local Culvers, we love the economic impact that it brings. We find that the guests are quite loyal to us and repeat. Visitors are always very friendly, very respectful. Our staff always enjoys the evening. Moving here in 2005, I remember my first Friday night here in the, here in the races at Culvers and it just wouldn't feel like a Friday night at Culvers if we didn't have that, you know, enjoyable community experience. We love being able to support the children. At the event gives us an opportunity to give away lots of free kids meals and different things to try to help out individuals in the community. We've really enjoyed the partnership. We find them to be absolutely wonderful and accommodating to work with and we will happily dust a little bit off of the ledges from time to time if necessary.
All right, Tammy, you're up.
Good on you. Okay, perfect. I'm on. Good evening. Tammy Simon, 387 Sisters Court, Menominee. I am the Director of Tourism at the Menominee Area Chamber and Visitor Center. I'm here tonight to speak in favor of approving the proposed lease for the Red Cedar Speedway, the contract. The Red Cedar Speedway isn't just a local attraction. It's a vital part of Menominee's history and tourism landscape. As one of the top dirt tracks in Wisconsin, the Speedway draws thousands of visitors from across the Midwest every season. These visitors are not just fans of racing. They're also tourists who spend money on local lodging, dining, and shopping, significantly boosting the local economy. According to a Longwoods study, tourism in Dunn County generates more than $100 million annually. Events like those hosted at the Red Cedar Speedway play a large role in that success. Each racing event brings out-of-town visitors who stay in our hotels, eat at our restaurants, fill their tanks with gas, and explore the attractions around Menominee, contributing directly to local businesses. The Speedway's events undoubtedly create a steady flow of tourism dollars into our region. Thanks to some new developments in geolocation data, we are able to put into real numbers the impact those visitors have on the economic vitality right here in Dunn County. Since 2018, the Red Cedar Speedway has welcomed approximately 175,000 fans through their gates. More than 30,000 of those visitors traveled 60 miles or more to attend these events and those visits resulted in more than 800 hotel stays as well as the countless visits to restaurants, grocery stores, destinations, and convenience stores. Keep in mind that those numbers that I just shared are excluding a full year of visits during the pandemic. The impact the Speedway makes on our local economy is undeniable. Venues like the Red Cedar Speedway help put Menominee on the map. By drawing visitors, they introduce them to our local charm and our other attractions. For many, it's their first stop before they visit local restaurants or stay in Menominee for a weekend getaway. Supporting the Speedway means supporting a critical driver of local tourism, ensuring that Menominee continues to thrive as a destination for race fans as well as travelers looking for a new and unique experience. Thank you.
That ends public comment.
Apparently I got cut off too. Next item is very brief. It's appointments. There's an errata there. Spencer Burnt is being appointed to the Transit Committee as a citizen member, not as a county board member, and he is not being appointed to the Transit, to the Highway Committee. So no Highway Committee, citizen member. So it's a little unclear. All right. Transit, citizen member, not highway. So I would need a motion. Supervisor Steen moves in a second. Supervisor Thomas seconds. Any speaking to the resolution? All right. All those in favor? Any opposed? All righty. So that would normally bring us to the report of the county manager, but I'm going to move item 11B up so that we can get the race discussion over sooner and get you all home in a reasonable amount of time. So 11B. Sorry. Facilities Committee, resolution approving a lease for Red Cedar Racing. I would need a motion in a second. Supervisor Prochnow moves. Supervisor Bauer seconds. We are now on the floor. Any speaking to the motion? Supervisor Vogel.
Thank you, Chair McCullough. So just as information, some of the changes that people might not have compared the old lease to the new lease is that the term of the lease went from three years to 10 years and I know that's a big change. But I think if we want improvements, and one of the other items was a sound barrier installation or to research and look into a way to reduce the noise. And if, if we want that to happen, maybe a longer term will help get some of those changes implemented. Another change is that the rent increases every three years by $500. But in essence, everything else was, was very much the same.
Thank you, Supervisor Vogel. Supervisor Gary Steen.
Yes, I'd like to speak in favor of the motion. I'm very happy to see that the Facilities Committee and the Racing Association have a good rapport and good working relationship and I would urge support.
Thank you, Supervisor Steen. Supervisor Thomas.
Yeah, I too would like to thank the Facilities Committee and the Red Cedar Racing Association for the time they put in to work together, resolve things with each other. And I would also like to ask that my fellow supervisors support the proposal of the contract that's on the table.
Thank you, Supervisor Thomas. Anyone else? All right. Seeing none, we are prepared to vote. All those in favor of approving the lease? Any opposed? Motion passes. Your lease is approved. And I will give you all, if you want to stay, you are absolutely welcome to stay. We'd love to have you. But if you want to, like, all get out of here, that's fine too. We'll, we'll give you a couple of minutes. All right, folks. I'm now going to bring us back to our regular agenda, which takes us to report of the county manager. Chris.
Good evening. You will not hear much from me tonight because most of the other, most of the presentation are on the part of my colleagues. You do have purchase orders over $40,000 in front of you, two squads, I believe. Any questions about that?
Oop, I guess.
And I don't, I probably have said this, but the reason that you see those is by our ordinance. They come to you for a review after they're spinning a purchase order in that amount of over 40 grand. And then the other thing, I will just take D real quickly because then I won't have to speak again. Update on our ERP. Again, that's our finance system plus. We had a request for proposal out for that. It finished up earlier this month. It's still October, right? Okay. Maybe at the end of September. Anyway, there was a group of people who, all of the leads to all of the committees that are part of that project, reviewed nine proposals and selected four to move on to the next phase, which will be some demos, which will take place at the end of this month over a number of days, eight days? Right, Katie? Where'd she go? She was here. Anyway, a lot of days. So we have a lot of staff time involved in making sure that this project comes off well and that we don't repeat our mistakes of the past. So, but we're moving along and it's, and it's, and it's coming along well. Any questions about ERPs? All right. Then with that, I'm going to turn the microphone over to Dan Dunbar, who is going to walk you through one more time, kind of a synopsis of borrowing. And the point of all this is not to hammer you over the head with it, although it might feel like that on any given day. It's really just to make sure that you understand what the impact of borrowing is to make a good decision. And, and the reason I say that is because I have a, had a number of individual conversations with some of you which let me know that it is complicated and it's hard to understand it all. And so we're going to keep coming back to it just so you can say no in the end, but at least you'll have done so, or you can say yes in the end, but at least you'll have done so believing that you, or you're knowing that you understood all of the information that was on the table.
Apparently it's up to me to
It is.
To explain that clearly. All right. So, so this presentation will kind of go over borrowing, what that looks like, what those impacts are. But also, I want to just clarify a lot of the words that we talk about and what we mean by them. And in some cases, what we mean by them is not the true definition of what they are. So we'll kind of get into that a little bit. You do have a copy of all of these slides and then I did give you that big printout of all of those numbers. That was, I know you're not going to be able to read it all on the screen. So those are some numbers for you to just kind of look at and, and think about. So, those are some numbers for you to just kind of look at and think about. And the only thing I'm going to point out is that I don't actually know what the numbers are going to be in the future. Those are projections. So, just going to throw that out there. So, the county property tax levy. So, the levy is the total amount of money that the county is asking property taxpayers to give in a year, right? That's kind of the basic definition of the levy. So, as we go over that, the, in Wisconsin, we kind of break it up into four different parts. So, we will always talk about it being the levy, but in some cases, we're all talking, in most cases, what we're talking about is the limited levy portion of this. And as we talk about levy limits, a portion of our levy is limited, other portions are not limited. And so, this kind of goes over what those are. So, the limited portion is about $18.6 million. The, that portion is limited by state law and only increases with net new construction. So, you hear that term happening a lot. It is new houses being built minus houses being destroyed, or businesses, whatever. It does not include your house was worth $100,000 this year and is now worth $120,000 this year. That $20,000 is not net new construction, that's just an increased value of your house. Net new construction is truly a new structure. The next one is debt levy. We're going to get into that a little bit more, but that is the amount of money that we pay towards our principal and interest on any bonds that we have out there. Next one is libraries. So, the funding of the libraries, which is included in the budget and is approved by the Community Resources and Tourism Committee, is not limited by the levy. Portions of that are mandated by state, the state. So, the libraries provide us with the utilization, and then we are required to fund them at 70% up to 100%. And that's a decision that's made in CR&amp;T. And the last one is bridge petitions. So, that is the towns requesting the county to levy for half of the cost of bridge or culvert repair. So, if they go through, I believe there's a process to this, but they have to cover one half, and then they can ask the county to levy county taxes in order to cover the We don't have a say in that. If they do that, we levy for it. That is a requirement. So, those are kind of the four areas. As we get into this, you'll see the libraries and bridges as they project them into the future on that big screen. I have no idea. So, I just held that number still. Those things could change. The libraries is based on the number of people, residents of Dunn County, that go to a library in the state of Wisconsin. The rest of the story. Yes, I figured I'd get some people that caught that. So, many times, as we go through this, we talk about the levy, and when you look at the, that multicolored budget summary that we have in there, there's that one column that has levy in there, and if you look at the bottom, it's going to have a total of $25 million, which is our levy. If you look in the top of it, you're going to see a negative $11 million. So, what's the negative $11 million? That's what this is. So, a lot of times, we bundle that, we call it levy. We shouldn't do that, but we do. And what that does is that whole number represents the amount of funding that we have. So, the levy plus state funding, that essentially has no strings attached. There's, this money could be used for anything that the board deems necessary. So, that's really what that column represents. So, this is a few little bit more of those numbers. So, ever sales tax, so that's the 0.5 of the 5.5% sales tax that you pay in Dunn County. So, that amounts to about $5 million this year. Oddly, we had about a half-million-dollar increase in the month of February this year. That was an absolute outlier. We are not budgeting for that in the future, although we are hopeful that we see it again, and then we'll have that. But we do feel like there was just a large purchase made that we should not count on happening in the future. The next one is state aid, shared revenue. So, you hear about that. There was changes to state aid that happened, I think it was two years ago, in 2023 or 2024, is when the state kind of changed the calculation for state aid. That state aid is based on state sales tax. So, if state sales tax is going up, our state aid goes up and kind of on that same path. And that was that change that was made then, in addition to a little bit more funding that came along with that. The next one is personal property and computer aid. Very unique one, but also very special this year. So, personal property tax used to be a taxed item on property taxes. So, this is a large, is the best way I can think to describe it. Inside of a manufacturing facility, if they were to have a large equipment that does that, that is personal property that would then be taxed, just like a house would be taxed, that property that's inside of that house is taxed as personal property. That tax was eliminated by the state last year. And, well, last year was the last year that we levied for it. This year, we no longer levy for that, and the state gave us the same amount of money that we had the year before, and that number will go up based on net new construction moving forward, that personal property aid will. So, that amounts to us for about, is about $317,000 increase in personal property tax aid this year. But you'll also see later, and if you sneak ahead, if you look at the difference between the limited levy last year and the limited levy this year, you'll see that it's about $34,000. It would have been about $334,000 if that $300 of personal property tax was still there. So, that's kind of what explains that, a little bit of an anomaly in the numbers. Next one is treasures revenue. Can I have them listed there? I won't go through them. And then the last one is rent. If you add all of these things up, they're not going to come out to $11 million. The last number that's in there that I didn't share on this, and we've talked about this, and that's our wage variance, which is ultimately a number that we budget that says, we budgeted for everybody's full salary, but we know we will not have 100% of all of our positions filled for the entire year. So, we kind of cut that back about 5%. And that number just kind of shows up in that negative to balance it out amongst all of the levy-funded positions. And I just did it right there, all of the no strings attached funding positions. So, all of those areas. So, that's kind of the breakdown of what we talk about in there. So, if you can review this and go over that, you can always ask, but that's kind of the breakdown of what the levy actually is. So, levy history. So, as you can see, there's the limited levy increase based on net new construction. This year, that's 1.32%. It varies. We typically live right around that 1.2% to 1.4% range. The debt levy changes based on the amount of money the county is obligated to pay for existing debt. So, this is our payment, our annual payment for our debt. Libraries, I explained that before, and then bridge petitions. So, this is kind of what it's looked like over the last years. This does include what is proposed for 2025 as well. All right, net new construction in the levy. So, we talk in maybe not all positive ways about the levy limit, but it has its place. So, what the levy limit does is it limits the amount of money that we can levy based on net new construction. So, what that means is if people build houses, we now have a new person paying taxes in the county. So, we can raise that levy, and it won't have an impact to the rest of the taxpayers, because our new taxpayer will absorb that entire amount of additional levy. So, I just wanted to kind of throw that calculation out there. So, in 2024, we had about $67 million of net new construction in Dunn County. So, those are new taxpayers who paid $0 in taxes in 2024. So, now in 2025, our levy is increasing by $228,000. So, that $67 million of property is actually going to pay about $304,000 in taxes. So, essentially, those properties are now going to pay for that increased levy. So, the people, so your taxes, the taxes from last year are essentially not impacted. And so, that's the intent around the levy limit, is that you're not actually raising taxes if you increase by only net new construction. And yes, those numbers don't come out exactly even, but that is, that just has to do with years and where those calculations happen, the valuation of things. The other thing I want to point out, and this is true of all of the tax information that I am providing you today, I gave a presentation last month or the month before where I said you can't just do this simple math in order to figure out what people's taxes are. I did the simple math because it's easier. It gives you, it gives you a pretty round number of what that tax impact would be, but don't go run this against your taxes and say, Dan, you said it would only increase by this much. It's going to be in the window of that level of an increase. So, anyway, summary there, levy increase due to net new construction does not increase taxes. All right, moving on to debt and debt service. This is another one of those words that I think sometimes we confuse and we say, well, that's our debt, when we're actually talking about our debt service. So, debt is the total amount of money that we owe. So, if you take that, you know, you have a $200,000 house, and you put $20,000 down, you are $180,000 in debt. That is your debt, $187,000. Your debt service is more like your mortgage payment. So, that is your annual payment that you do that. And this is, once again, one of those things that I just, be careful as you hear us talk, because sometimes we call debt service debt. And there is a dramatic difference between those two numbers. So, debt service is the amount of annual money that we pay on our debt, and it correlates directly to our debt levy, another area that we will talk about. So, all of those, those two words are essentially interchangeable. So, kind of restating that, but debt's impact on the levy is based on the debt service payments of what is owed. So, having more debt does not necessarily mean that our debt service is going to go up. It comes down to what our payments are. So, I guess I kind of put that down of, you have a car, you have a five-year loan on a car. After three years, you turn your car back in and you essentially take out a new loan for a new car. You might have the same monthly payment, but you are more in debt, because you owe that next five years' worth of car out of that. So, you, that's where I say the debt is not what makes our debt levy go up, it is how much we have to pay on that annually. We'll kind of get into that again. So, a change in debt service results in a change in the debt levy, which will then impact taxes. All right, now we get into the math. So, the charts that I have here are in this thing, but this is also just cut-ups of that big screen that you have. So, kind of the upper right-hand portion of the larger piece of paper that you have there is what's going to be on the screen if you're having problems reading it. So, talk about that. So, what happens if we don't borrow? So, if we, in the past, we've always, I shouldn't say always, but we've often borrowed about $3 million a year, and that's kind of what's been talked about. If we weren't to do that in 2025, this is what you're going to see. So, 2026, well, 2025, nothing really changes in not borrowing, because your debt levy, so that amount of money that we pay on borrowing is about a year removed. So, we just borrowed $3 million. We're going to pay that next year, and so that's reflected in the 2025 budget. What we borrow in 2025, you will see on 2026 and beyond. So, that's kind of why I highlighted that number, is a decision to borrow now impacts levy next year. So, what we would have in 2026, you can see that debt levy actually is going to go up, and that isn't because you borrowed, that's because of all of those future payments and how they've all been then worked out. 2027, you see a decrease. 2028, you see another decrease. And then 2029, you actually see an increase. And that just has to do with how payments are all determined. I had a slide, I wasn't going to go into it, but we sell bonds, we don't take loans. And the way that that happens isn't quite as structured as maybe a loan repayment or mortgage repayment, where you can kind of expect that same amount every year. It has to do with the maturity dates of each of the bonds that we sell. So, you do somewhat see fluctuations in that, and we utilize that in order to stabilize our debt payments. So, that's kind of what that looks like if we don't borrow. So, debt levy goes down, limited levy is going to continue to increase, because that is independent of that. Libraries and bridges, like I said, I just kind of held them the same going forward, and taxes will go down for two years, and then they're going to increase in that in So, I do want to, I guess, now would kind of be the way I told you that I did some projections out through 2026 to 2029. Our limited levy is increasing based on 1.2% net new construction. It's kind of been the number that we've been closest to over time. And the equalized value, which is total value of all property in the county, is increasing about 5%, which is kind of holding to the trends that we've been seeing. All right, limited levy versus debt levy. I feel like this is a point that we've tried to hammer home a few times, and if there's one thing you get out of me rambling up here for a little while, this would be the takeaway. So, I just, I pulled out two years here, 2026 to 2027. What you can see is that limited levy is increasing by 1.2%, which is about $226,000. And the debt levy is going to, this is without borrowing, would decrease $862,000. So, the debt levy decreases, so that decrease cannot be repurposed for other purposes. And I think this is, this is where it's a little bit different of, if you had a car payment and you no longer had a car payment, you now have all of that money available to use for whatever you want. That's not true with this. If the debt levy goes down, the only impact is that it'll impact taxes. We don't get to use that savings that we're used to levy for and say, now we're going to take that, and we're just going to pay cash for the highway projects. We don't have that money, and we can't ask for it. That makes sense? It's kind of, it's a point we've tried to hammer home, but I think an important one in a difference between personal finances and Wisconsin government finances. So, moving along, the impacts of not borrowing comes down to where that borrowing is going to go to. So, we can borrow for capital improvements, and we can borrow for highway projects. We cannot borrow for operations. So, as we target $3 million of bargaining, not bargaining, borrowing, you can see kind of what that highway maintenance budget and construction budget is, and what kind of makes up that construction budget is that $3 million of debt plus 1.17 million, I want to qualify this, this is the proposed budget, 1.1 million of fund balance. There's some levy that was going to go towards that, and then the wheel tax or the vehicle registration fee. We're supposed to call it the vehicle registration fee. So, if you were to not borrow that $3 million, obviously, that construction budget would have to come down by $3 million, because there wouldn't be funding available to do that. But as you look at kind of what those costs are, as you talk about doing construction versus maintenance on a road. So, if you're going to repave a road, that's a whole lot of asphalt that you have to put down in order to do that. Whereas if you're mowing a lawn, there isn't a lot of a material cost that goes along with that. So, the ratio of material to labor for those projects is vastly different. So, as that's budgeted, that $6.5 million in construction, a portion of that goes towards materials, and a portion of that goes towards labor costs. Those labor costs are costs that we have. They're people, there's people's jobs. So, we essentially have to move So we essentially have to move that around. And what that change would result in, there's hundreds of ways this is demonstrating example of what you could do. With that remaining $3.5 million towards construction. So the first option then is you would take 1.7 million dollars. Which would pay for a couple of projects that are essentially matched by the state. And when we do have these state match projects, we don't do the county highway department doesn't do that. We pay a third party to do that. So that is a 100%. Call it materials cost, right? There's no labor impacted into that. Those projects are about. I looked at it and I forgot the number. I think it's like 4.5 million dollars worth of actual work being done. At a cost of 1.7 million dollars. So it makes sense to do those projects with that money. So then that leaves you with. About 1.8 million dollars, feel you could pull off one more county project in there for about 733. And then that leaves you with. About, well, 1.64 million dollars that was in that construction budget. That we would have to move to maintenance because at that point, the labor. Ratio of that of that remaining 1.6 million dollars, about 800,000 of that is. Is labor costs. So that's that's about an 80/20. So essentially, we would move that over to maintenance and we would do more maintenance on the remaining roads that essentially weren't repaired or or other items. So. Just want to kind of demonstrate what that change looks like is that $3 million could to decrease to construction and not borrowing. Actually results in about a $4 million can decrease to construction and then an increase to maintenance. Do we just have to shift those those items around? Again, this is an example of how it can be done. The math gets kind of fun as you start dealing with how much of that is salary and how much is this project and how much is that project? But the impact isn't quite as simple as we're just going to cut 3 million out of that. I'm sure that was confusing, trust me. The slide took the most amount of time, but as you kind of take a look at that, just think through that, that's kind of what that impact is like. All right, so summary, if you don't borrow, you will see a decrease in taxes for a couple of years. They will go up and and when I say they will go up, they will go up relative to the year before. So that 20 not 2029 tax number on on the bottom of this page is obviously less than the 2026 one. So. Your taxes are down, but for the most part, people feel that impact on a year to year basis. My taxes went up this year. So even without borrowing, you will see that that peak back up in a year, even though overall it isn't, it is going down. The other impact then is highway. So not borrowing is is a decrease in $4 million in construction. And that would essentially become an ongoing type project. So. That that proposed what I just went over on that other page of doing that 1.7 million dollars in state projects and then another $700,000 that covered nine miles of roads. That put us back on a 47 year schedule for for replacing highways. So uh that's kind of that impact that you would see if you weren't to borrow that $3 million. The other piece that that is kind of put in there is the state aid for county roads. State aid for county roads is currently 1.6 million dollars. That is based on a formula on a five year rolling average of the amount of money we put into our own county road. So we decrease county construction projects. The state says, oh, you don't care, they're going to put in less money over time as well. So we could see a a great decrease there. I represented that here as about a as about a 2, a 60% decrease because it's essentially how much we've been decreasing it by. Saw you going to it.
Sorry, Supervisor Quinn.
Taxes changes. So the taxes will go up by $4. That's is that $4 per a thousand dollar house or is it? What is that for?
That's me forgetting to remove that. It won't. Look at the graph at the bottom. That that graph on the bottom.
Okay.
It it was originally like four time for 100 every $100,000, but when I when I ran the numbers, it was just easier to kind of demonstrate that that on the bottom. Yeah, that bottom line is kind of what you would see there. And that's to show that from 28 to 29, you go from 1,110,000 to 1,121,000. So about $11 increase. In that in that area on a $300,000 house. So if you want to put your four in there, that's it's kind of four per 100,000 is where where that was coming from. Supervisor Barrier.
So if we don't pass borrowing, the replacement cycle for the county highways increases to 47 years. If we do pass borrowing, can you remind me what it would be?
Uh, we were targeting 20. 23.
That's a big difference. Thank you.
All right, so uh I oh. This is just, I know there's been a lot of talk. I don't know if it's all been through the county board, if everybody's familiar with it, the highway committee has certainly been looking at it and it's been part of our capital improvement plan. Is is the intent of looking at a a new highway building in the future. So what I wanted to show is what that would look like if we don't borrow, but then we decide in. In this case, 2028 that we want to start construction on a on a highway building. So once again, these payments are a year delayed. So it'd be a 2028 borrow. So. What that looks like then to the to the taxpayer here, you can kind of see this in the same those same numbers. But that taxpayer sees that decrease in their taxes, the same one as as the one before. But then when 2029 comes up, they're then seeing a, in this case, it's an 82,000 or $82 increase that are taxes in that one year, which gets you back up. Essentially to that same level that that you're at right now from a, it's actually a little bit higher uh from a tax standpoint. So. That year to year hit, you know, it's, oh, that's great. I save $10. Oh, that's great. I save $10. What? I increased it by 80. So I think that's a piece that we kind of look at is like, what is that long term plan as you do that? And what's the impact if you were to choose to to go to a highway building in the future in addition to not borrowing? Now, this also implies that we're not building highways. So um so there's, this is also still decreasing that that high that annual highway borrow.
All right. Hang on Supervisor Shackleton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, so what would that look like if we do borrow the 3 million and then we also. Decide to build a county. Building for the shop.
Yep. You getting there? That was my next slide. Yep. Thank you. Yep. So um so this is kind of showing you our our current county debt practice. So when we say, oh, we borrow $3 million every year. I would target less that we're not necessarily saying we're going to borrow $3 million every year. What we're trying to do is stabilize the debt levy. So that that net new construction is the impact that we see on on bar on on the taxpayer. And if that debt levy stays level, then you won't actually see tax increases. So we can borrow. As long as we don't increase that debt levy amount, then we're we're kind of maintaining the burden to the taxpayer at that at that same. Amount. So um. So that's what this is demonstrating. You can see there is a deep an increase from 2025 to 2026. And so that would be that borrow in 2023 that gets us up to about. A 5.3 million, that presentation that Beata gave last week, that's what that was kind of all all based on. What we do know, and so I do have in here the annual borrowing to pay for capital highway projects plus. I called it long term planning to keep the debt levy stable and maintain and improve facilities. Supervisor Shackleton, but that's a shorthand for and build a highway building in the future. So we feel, I shouldn't say we feel, we've worked with our municipal advisor. And we do know that we can, we can fit some of those projected numbers for a highway project into this and maintain that $3 million borrow. While maintaining this 5.3 million dollar debt levy into the future. So. And that just gives us little bits of freedom to be able to do some of those larger projects that are inevitable. We have highway building is one of the older buildings. Obviously, the neighbors knew where this building has been recently redone. We're we're working on the HVAC system for the judicial center, which is still also in in pretty good repair. Over there with a new roof a couple of years ago. So we can look at all of those future facility plans and kind of maintain that over time. So you can see what that looks like here and then those costs on the bottom. So you do see a a slight increase in taxes on on an annual basis. As as the property value should say that the property value that I have down there is also increasing at 5%. And if you look at it on the sheet that I gave you, that was a $200,000 property in 2019, whatever the first column is. Just increasing by 5% over time.
So I'm going to just make a brief interjection. So about six years ago now, the county board started trying to essentially. Smooth things over so that our debt would not significantly impact taxes up or down. But the point of the borrowing plan and the long term capital improvements plan that was passed then. And that this borrowing builds on is that stability. So just I thought the historical context might be useful for those of you who haven't been here forever.
It was probably a long boring conversation, presentation, just like this one that. Yep. So uh this number down on the bottom. It says county tax on $1,000. You might hear that called a mill rate. That's essentially what that is. The the simple math there is it is the total levy. By by the equalized value. So as we kind of just say, this is what all of the properties in Dunn County are worth. This is how much they pay in taxes. Well, and then you got to move the decimal places over for the for the $1,000. Otherwise, it's point 00043. So but but what that ultimately leads to is. Yeah, it's about $4.53 per $1,000 of equalized value. And then you'll see that that number down on the bottom is actually that property value times that, and that's where your. Tax amount comes from. That's the math that I told you not to do, but it does get you very close to where it is. There's apportionment things that that'll get you off a little bit in a perfect world with no tids and. And centralized assessment for the entire county, that would be the math. But. That is what that is. And last slide.
Clear as mud.
Supervisor Jetson.
Clear as mud. Could you go over the, you know, you were talking, it's not like taking a bank loan that you actually sell bonds. Can you describe that a little bit more?
You didn't even know I did that, did you? I had the slide, I pulled it out, but I kept it just in case. It's not formatted, so it's just pure black and white. So bonds versus a loan or a mortgage. So the county sells bonds. So a bond is essentially a certificate that says. You give me $100 and I promise in two years I will give you 110. So when we borrow. Let's just say. Take a fun. Hundred hundred thousand dollars over 10 years. We might sell a bond for one year. And then a bond that is that we will pay back in two years and a bond we will pay back in three years. And so every year. So you can break that $100,000 into 10 individual bonds. Each one of those bonds will have a after one year, I will pay you. Do my math divided by 10, $10,000. So you're going to give me $10,000 for my one year bond and I'm going to give you. $10,050 back for it. The two year bond. You're going to give me $10,000 for it and I'm going to give you $10,070 back after two years. So that's kind of how that works is each of those has their own sale that has its own maturity date. And what that means is unlike a mortgage where I could say, hey, I have all this cash, I just want to pay off my mortgage. And then I don't have to pay all of those future interest payments. That's not true in a bond. You're still obligated to pay that person back the same amount that you told them you would at the maturity date. So there is ways of having a bond that you can sell off earlier. It's called calling it. And when you do that, when you sell the bond originally, you have to say, I want to be able to call on that. In the future. And then you don't get as good of a rate on it because they don't have the same guarantees that they have in the future. So. There's a little bit of difference in how that works and how those payoff can be. But that's where we can kind of be creative as we talk about potentially borrowing for the highway projects as we can say. All right, we want to buy this, we want to pay this off over 20 years. We know that the. Payment for the bonds for this building are going to be done in 2032. So we actually will have more debt levy available in 2032. So let's pay a little bit less over these first few year bonds and then we'll pay a little bit more in the future. So gives us a little bit of flexibility to balance that out. My word makes sense? Hopefully it was true.
I'm going to insert a little more historical context. Again, one of the reasons that we talked about having that stability in borrowing is bond issuers like stability. We that we've got a great bond rating. It is much easier to maintain that bond rating if we have a nice, stable, expected plan.
Thank you for calling on that. I'm happy I saved the slide. All right, any other questions? So that'll come to you.
No, you got one more. Go ahead and finish your sentence.
There it is. I was going to say that'll come to you at the at the next meeting. So if you have questions, you know, I'm happy to dig into the numbers.
All right, Supervisor Hagan.
Thank you. Um, I've been up since 3 AM, so I apologize if I sound like I'm rambling. I probably am. In regards to net new construction, um in our housing study, uh it showed that we have like 400 parcels that are considered. Beyond repair in the county. And if um by some miracle, we have um all 400 of those parcels become. New houses worth $300,000 each in the span of a year, all that adds up to our net new construction amount, correct?
Yeah.
And so. So you you have to take away for the destruction and add for the construction.
Okay, um, so it seems like part of our strategy budgeting wise and whatnot, sounds like we should. Not prioritize, but keep in mind um. Getting that new construction going and potentially having that. Help pay for like the highway building and whatnot via these means and for. New construction like this doesn't seem like it'd be anything that would require like county funds to promote. These new buildings going up. And so this seems like something that. I think we should really look into um in the future.
Yeah, I mean, our participation in in the economic development projects is 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 part of that exact strategy.
Perfect.
Supervisor Bishant.
So do ADUs count towards the net new construction?
They would.
Yes.
Yeah. I don't know the specifics. I think there's something remodels. Well, I'm looking towards an assessor. Yeah, a remodel would also. So. We're running away.
Good plan.
Beata.
Yeah. Good evening. Just a reminder too, I you should have gotten an email from me with the link to all the supporting documents. In the budget packets. We're not going to go through them this evening. We're going to go at a very high level. So I'm going to get you um I I prepared a PowerPoint presentation. But I'm going to take you directly right into two slides. And one here is what is it that we are actually proposing? So we are reaching the the. are reaching the the I want to call it the budget season. So we've did a couple rounds back and forth with the management, the executive committees with some suggestions. We did a fantastic workshop. So now we're trying to nearing that end to tie and balance our budget. So what's proposed here is what we have as of the most recent updates, as far as grants, all the information that's available relative to the levy limits, also the sales tax, the state aid, as current as we could. So here is, we got 111 or 112 million dollar budget. So I broke it down into expenses versus the revenue. So I broke out the debt, because previously we had them all lumped, but I wanted to separate what it is that's specific to highway, which is 3 million, and what is for the geothermal and the solar project, which is the 11 million. We started with a big gap. We had some departments go back. We did some revisions, decreases, we eliminated some expenses. So that reduced our fund balance that needs to be applied to 2.47 million. I think last time you saw it was slightly higher than that. Our wages. Now, the CIP there, the 13 million, so that would include the CIP that got approved early in the year, and the $11 million solar geothermal project. And our debt obligation, as of now, it stands at 5.1. And Dan's slide, it was slightly different because we were still in the process of borrowing. So this is, this is after we closed, so we know exactly what the interest is going to be, which is included in here. And then the next slide. On on your packet, it's page 19. There's a lot of information here. It's actually called the Dunn County Fund Balance. There you go. The slide before that is very similar to what how Dan walked you through and what makes up our numbers as far as the debt and the borrowing and so on. So but I wanted to bring you back into our fund balance, where we are at with the fund balance. So you had our audit, we did some, the audit review, the audit was as year end 2023. We know with that in '24, we also applied some fund balance to balance the budget. So what you see here is the unassigned fund balance. Unassigned means that it has not been committed for anything else that can be used for '25 and beyond. And I also put 47%, and what that means is 40% of our annual expenditures. And then what's recommended is per hour resolution that got passed between that 35 and 50. We don't want to go below 35, and we don't want to be over 50. And being over 50 is a good thing. But the resolution, the fund balance policy states being there at the 35 to 50. So now, if we do apply this fund balance to balance our 2025 budget, that's going to get us to 37, from 47 to 37. Leaving our fund balance at a 9.8. Now, you know, one important thing that as you're thinking about the the fund balance, the fund balance is there to help us balance the budget, obviously. But it's the last resort. If the departments are underspending their expenses, they won't be drawing on this fund balance. This would we would know how much fund balance is used until we reach the end of the year. Now, my colleagues and I also analyzed to see what have, how much of that fund balance that we applied in balancing the budget versus how much of that, you know, did we really use? So if we balance the budget and says, you know, we're going to get $2 million of fund balance. And after the audit, after all, the money got exhausted and and there was no need to draw on the fund balance. So we looked back and that had not happened in four years. So it is, it is more of a funds that we're that the county here would commit to give the authority. If we do need it, you can draw on it. Yes, basically, that's we budgeted, but we have not used it for the last four years. Also, keep in mind that even though I'm saying here is worst case scenario, if we need this money, that's what it will look like. But we haven't in the last four years. The other thing, too, is we've been putting money into the fund balance. And also, as we're looking at our highway, future planning, this kind of goes to what Dan was presenting, our debt, looking at that bigger picture, not just one year, but couple of years out, kind of keep our financial position more of a stable, affordable, and more manageable. And then we also did some modeling, financial modeling, not only with our debt, but also looking at the NDC, how they're projecting. And in '25, their budget came where they're planning on putting back. So when I'm, again, speaking of that 9.8 million, this is if nothing, no money going back, and we're going to spend every single penny and that 2.4 million dollars. Hopefully, that's also clear as mud.
All right, Supervisor Byrne.
All right. So I think to kind of connect it to a language that I'm sure most of us can probably speak, we can think of the fund balance almost as like a health savings account or rainy day fund where it's
Right.
We're making sure we have that money in case something does come up and we need it. But we're just kind of trying to keep it there so that it's
That's right.
Safe for the future.
That's right.
Supervisor Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just one question about the fund balance. You made a comment about we add money to it. I'm assuming that would be unexhausted funds from different departments that gets put back into the fund. Is that correct? I thought so. Thanks.
So you're just going to just going to clarify. So in 2023, because you just saw that audit report, in 2023, I'm just going to use raw numbers, we budgeted to use about $2.5 million of fund balance. And in reality, we didn't spend that, and we put $2.5 million back into the fund. So essentially, we were a net $5 million, you know, over the course of that year.
Supervisor Bishant.
And when we're budgeting, we're budgeting that wage variance, but you Yes. Budget that conservatively.
Yes.
So if we budget that 2.4 from fund balance to balance, but we have a higher wage variance, then we wouldn't need that fund either.
Right.
Yeah, and always our hope is that, you know, the fund balance will go up because if it does that, we will have much less of a problem when we get around to building a highway shop.
And also in the link that I provided you with all, all the fabulous workbooks that I do, that this top summary, this big summary sheet, I've actually separated what the fund balance was applied, and majority of that is towards the highway. There's some other departments, too, and I want to single them out, single highway. But this will kind of tell you how it's broken out. Any other questions?
Not seeing any.
All right. I think that's it. That's it. Thank you so much.
Andrew.
I got you. All right. I was, yeah, I was asked to do a quick presentation tonight on the upcoming election. I don't know if you've heard, if you've seen an advertisement for a candidate, but we're going to have an auction. Do we have my PowerPoint presentation? Yeah. It's it's brief. It's going to be brief. I want to just basically kind of give an overview of the preparation that we've been doing, some of the work that's been going into this election, what it means. And then so there were some questions from some supervisors about some procedural things. Where are ballots kept? And how long do we keep them and whatnot? So I'll start off with saying that we have an amazing group of poll workers and chief inspectors and clerks in Dunn County. We're incredibly lucky that we have this. In fact, we do training for each of the, each of the clerks, the poll workers, and the chief inspectors for every election. These are the upcoming train dates that you're going to see. We always try to put them as close to an election as possible, so the information stays fresh in people's brains. This time, we're going to break it out. On Wednesday, October 30, we're going to have a brand new poll worker training. We've got about 40 new poll workers who have never worked in an election before. They're not doing it themselves. They'll be with very experienced people who know what they're doing. But it is a chance and opportunity for them to learn the laws and regulations that go into our elections here in Dunn County and in Wisconsin. And then we have two, I call them refresher trainings. It's for poll worker, poll workers who have worked many elections before, but we always see what's the new up-to-date information. We always hold those trainings here in this room, and it's really important to see what are the new rules and regulations that have been put forward by the Wisconsin Election Commission or the legislature that has, that has been put into effect into law. And then we're having a chief inspector training that this year will focus very much on security of all of our polling locations. And it will also focus on decorum and how to keep that as best as possible with this upcoming election. There's been a lot of heated feelings towards this election, so we want to make sure everyone's prepared as best as possible. The precincts and workers, right? I am, as your county clerk, I am the election administrator for the county. Wisconsin uses a decentralized system. Many other states have a very centralized system with the state. Wisconsin is decentralized. So all of the, the election administration happens within each of the 72 counties. From there, we work very closely with the city, town, and village clerks. And from there, they work with their chief inspectors and poll workers. So that's kind of the the structure that we use here in Wisconsin. Who are your poll workers, right? If you ever attended a poll worker training, and I know that some people in this room have, you always hear me talk about that we don't have six degrees of separation in Dunn County. It's like a degree and a half, right? Everyone pretty much knows who's working at the polls. It's Aunt Betsy, it's Uncle Ron, right? It's the people that are your neighbors that you know. And so these are just some examples of the poll workers. For example, this is Erin Metcalf up here in this top right-hand corner. She happens to be the office manager for the clerk of court. You will also see Martha Hartung, who is the clerk for the town of O'Gally, who happens to be married to Supervisor Hartung. So these are people that we know, right? In Dunn County, we're very, very fortunate. As a rural county, we know these people. They are friends, neighbors, and relatives. So when you hear rumors about or concerns about fraud, we always like to say, we have a degree and a half of separation between everybody in this county, because we can find out that everyone is trained properly, everyone knows each other, and we don't have the fraud as an issue here in Dunn County. The other thing, it's really important, there were some questions about our tabulators, right? The voting machines. You, as the voter, are the voting machine. You fill out a paper ballot in Dunn County, and you are the voting machine to then put in your ballot into a tabulator that counts your vote, right? There's lots of questions about the tabulators, and there are three currently different types of tabulators that are approved in the state of Wisconsin. We use groups from a company called Command Central, and they are in almost all 50 states across the nation. And to be an approved tabulator in the state of Wisconsin, you have to get approval from the Wisconsin Election Commission. And you can see here, these are just kind of some of the first steps, right? It has to meet a very rigorous set of standards. It has to be approved by the Election Administration Commission. And there's at the federal level. And so even to propose new equipment takes several years of certification to be able to even be used. And then it has to go through several public trials and tests even before the state will sign off on it. So when people are worried about that, and when they discuss hand counting ballots, right? For an example, that's a talking point that gets thrown out there. I always say that these are thoroughly tested before every election. Each of the clerks do what is called a pre-lateral test, and then they do a public test. If you want to see a public test, the clerks always post when they're doing their public test. It's a requirement by law. You're more than welcome to attend. They fill out ballots, they feed them in the machine, they print the tapes out, they check all the numbers to make sure that the machines are tabulating everything correctly. When there's questions about hand counting ballots, I always think of our amazing poll workers who oftentimes have worked 16 or 17-hour days to then potentially have to count thousands of ballots by hand across several different races. There's lots of math and statistics on this. And it, in Dunn County, for example, with the last general election we had, we had 18,472 voters. That's my job. That would take roughly six weeks to hand count ballots if we had every single poll worker hand counting all the ballots. That is well beyond the certification period that we are allowed to have for an election. For a general election, that means we would basically miss all of our deadlines, and the state wouldn't be able to certify the election, especially the presidential election, by the time certification happens in January. Those are some other points. I'll send this out to you all in an email so you can have these points. But it's basically how each of the steps to be certified, to use a piece of voting tabulation equipment here in Wisconsin, all the steps that have to go on to that. It's very, very thorough. All the machines are tested, and they're also maintained every year. We have general maintenance that happens every single June. It's just, it's, they're very tied and trusted equipment that we use here. There were some questions about observers. Oftentimes, in a general election, we'll get a lot of different people who want to observe the election process. That's totally fine. People are allowed to do that. But we run a very tight ship here in Dunn County. You're allowed to observe, but the law states that you have a specific observation area, and you are not allowed to impede in the election process, right? If you have a cell phone, you're not allowed to record anything, you're not allowed to take a call. You're there to observe the election. We don't want anyone at any point in time impeding the process. So we will most likely get lots of observers because Wisconsin is decentralized, and all the elections happen at each of the 72 counties. We'll oftentimes have a lot of people in a presidential election observing. We do lots of training to make sure everybody is fully prepared so that we keep decorum at the polling locations. In Dunn County, we really stress that everyone should feel safe at every single point in time during an election at the polls. So there's lots of different rules. Observers have to check in, they're monitored, they're not allowed to interact with anyone. There's a lot of different rules and regulations that I, if you're interested, we can talk a little bit more about, and I'm happy to do that one-on-one. The other thing that's important to note is there were some questions about how do we certify the election. There's been some chatter that there are going to potentially be people who will try to impede the certification of this particular election, not only in Wisconsin, but across the nation. That is a threat and chatter that we take very seriously. We always ask that the sheriff's department and other police entities within the county put on extra staff during an election day. The sheriff's office typically puts on extra deputies to circulate around the county just in case there would be an emergency. But this time, we're really ramping up to make sure that we are safe and secure as possible. After the election night, right, each of the municipalities do what's called a municipal Board of Canvas. That's where the polls close at 8:00, as long as all the ballots have been fed into the tabulator. Then they start the certification process. It's important to note that if there's, if there are voters in line at 8:00 PM, they are allowed to vote. The last general election we had, there was a hour and 45-minute time from when the polls technically closed at 8:00 PM until we fed the last voter through. until we fed the last voter through. We're hoping to have sped up that process with the use of Badger Books. It should go much faster this time. But if you are in line at eight PM, you are allowed to vote, as long as you stay in that line. Just make sure you do that. After, after the election is done, all the ballots are taken out, they're sifted through, they're double-checked, they're cross-referenced with the tape that's printed out, and then the municipalities do what is on this left-hand side, called the certificate of canvas. This is a requirement that they have to submit to my office that night, saying, "We have reviewed this information." It is signed off by the chief inspector and a minimum of two other poll workers, verifying that the information is accurate and official as the board of canvas from the municipality that night. From there, the next day, all of the election materials come back to the county clerk's office, and they're kept here and stored safely in our vault. After that, the Monday after the election, the county board of canvas meets to convene to certify the election process. After that has been completed and signed off by typically the county clerk, then the other two approved board of canvas members, one from each political party. That information is then sent to the state. The state will then go through their certification process before it goes to the federal level in January. I'm sorry, for the federal level in January for the presidential election. Any federal offices are oftentimes certified before that. So there's a lot of different structure to make sure that we have systems in place to double, triple, quadruple-check everything, including the numbers of the votes that are cast. Election retention, right? We talked about that. All these materials come back to my office. They're stored securely in the vault. All of these blue canvas bags that you're gonna see over here, those are the election materials from the prior election. Those are all the ballots from the prior election. They are often kept, well, they are kept in my office for twenty-two months. That is the minimum requirement for a federal office. Oftentimes, spring elections, where we're talking about municipal offices, the retention period is not that long, but we have it as a just standard procedure that we keep all election ballots and materials for twenty-two months. You'll also see on the right-hand side all of these boxes that are organized with all the additional election materials. So the blue canvas bags have all the ballots. The organized, detailed, color-coded boxes we have on the right retain all of the different election materials. So that's the certification documents, all of the tapes, all of the board of canvas materials. Everything is kept and retained for the twenty-two-month period. There were some questions about threats. This is something that we've been taking very seriously. There have been countless threats across the nation to election officials and poll workers, and we take it very seriously. And I want, if anybody's listening, to know that anyone that is threatening an election official, especially here in Dunn County, we will ask for quick and efficient prosecution. It is not something that we are going to tolerate whatsoever here in Dunn County. But it is something that is happening. In the fall of last year, Wisconsin did not have any fall elections, but there were several states that did. Of the states that had elections, eight states had election officials that received fentanyl-laced letters. This is kind of the new anthrax from the early two thousands, if you remember that. Fentanyl-laced letters are being sent to election officials. So it's very, very severe, and we're trying to monitor that as best as possible. We've educated the clerks that if they have any sort of suspicious-looking mail, they are to call the sheriff's department immediately to send a deputy out to then take that to a secure location. We share a safety box that can be opened for mail that is questionable between Eau Claire and Dunn Counties. So it's definitely something that's that we're facing. We get constant updates with the Wisconsin Election Commission. We meet with them weekly to hear about the increased threats. I just want to say that as your county clerk, like I said, we take this very seriously, and we want to make sure that people feel safe. We do really, really work hard to make sure we have all the safety and procedures in place so that the election will go off effectively and efficiently. But we cannot control what other people do. We can only control what we happen, what happens at the polling location as best we can. So if you hear of anything, or if anybody even makes a joke about it, please remind them of the severity that we're facing here for this particular election. And please let me know. We want to make sure that any and all threats, whether they're a joke or credible, are reported, because we just, we cannot have this happen in Dunn County. So I know it was a little severe for Wednesday night. Are there, that was a quick overview. Like I said, if you want to come into my office, I'm happy to go into probably way too much detail in an hours-long presentation with you in my office. But are there any questions right now, as it relates to the preparation for the upcoming general election?
Supervisor Lyon.
Andrew, do we know how many eligible voters there are in Dunn County?
I'm so glad you asked. There, the, there's two different numbers that we look at, right? There's registered voters and then eligible voters. The eligible voters is pretty much more of a stable number, and registered voters change every day. We see anywhere from a hundred to three hundred and fifty registrations coming in every day. There are thirty-two thousand four hundred and seventy-six eligible voters currently, as of this morning, in Dunn County. That's great. We're looking at roughly twenty-six thousand four hundred and ninety-two registered voters currently in Dunn County, and that number continues to rise every day. So those are the kind of numbers. So if you go on to the county clerk section of the website, and you look at some prior election night reporting, you'll see the percentage of the vote, right? So here's the total number of votes cast in Dunn County. Here's the percentage of registered voters. Here's the percentage of eligible voters. So, yes.
Supervisor Quinn.
Thank you. Andrew, I've had some citizens ask about the express concerns about the Badger Books. Could you talk about that a little bit and why they're important?
Sure. Like we talked about, safety and safety and security has been of utmost importance in the last several elections. We want to make sure that everything is as safe and secure as possible. And the Badger Book is an electronic poll book. If you're used to going to a poll where you have a set of individual poll workers, and you provide your ID and you state your name, they'll then flip to find your last name in a paper book. The Badger Book basically allows a voter to show their ID, present it. The poll worker will verify that it is that person. We can scan the back of their ID. It will bring up just that voter's information. We can confirm it. They can sign in, they get a voter ticket, they can go pick up their ballot. It goes from check-in of a voter from roughly two minutes and forty-seven seconds. There's a lot of science on this, Tom. I could bore you for it for a long time, to roughly twenty-six seconds. So it's a very, it's much more efficient system. It's also very safe and secure. They are not connected to the internet, just like the tabulators are not connected to the internet. All of the information is only accessible through a three-step biometric authentication process that has to happen in my office. So they're a safe and secure feature. Like I said, they're not connected to the internet. They are the way to be the most efficient and safe way to check voters in and register voters on election day.
Supervisor Burn.
Mr. Chair. Thank you for all the work that you do. Regarding the trainings, are those possibly open for citizens to just observe?
Absolutely, we do. We, we don't require any registration. Anyone is able to come and observe and learn some of the rules and regulations regarding the elections. And like I said, they'll be posted online, and they were sent out to all the clerks, to all the other poll workers and chief inspectors, but if you'd like to attend, you can hear me talk about this for, for two hours on end, Spencer. It's quite exciting. The other question that happened was, how many poll workers do we have in Dunn County? We have forty precincts in Dunn County, thirty municipalities have forty precincts. For this election, we will have thirty-six reporting units, and we have two hundred and fifty-three poll workers in Dunn County. So we want to make sure that everyone's trained as best as possible. It's something that we started when I took over as county clerk. We started doing countywide poll worker training, before training was expected to have happened at the municipal level. And when you have a municipal clerk who works a full-time forty-hour job and does clerking at night, it was a lot to ask of those clerks. So we standardized training, and now it happens at the county to make sure all the elections across those thirty-six reporting units are run exactly the same.
Supervisor Bjork.
Larry Bjork, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Nice job, Andrew. Very good report. It seems like the chatter that I hear as far as both political parties are encouraging early voting. And just following back on my own experience, when, when there was many years when I would not even be in the state when the election day was, that I went to the clerk's home and did it. Now, I hope they don't do that anymore.
Nope. Not allowed anymore.
Okay, so and then you mentioned, and again, I've only experienced it voting in person and presenting the ID. Is there, is there an ID required for all forms of voting?
Yes. So absentee ballots for the general election had to be mailed out by September nineteenth, the first round. If you request an absentee ballot anytime between now and the Friday before the election, they will certainly get you a ballot sent out. But the first round was due to be sent out on the nineteenth. Dunn County had all of the absentee ballots sent out by September sixteenth. So we exceeded the due date, which was great. But to request an absentee ballot, even to do it online, you have to upload your ID or show your ID to the clerk to be able to receive an absentee ballot. You have to fill out an absentee ballot application and provide your ID to make sure that you are the person requesting a ballot. And then the other nice thing Supervisor Quinn had mentioned Badger Books. All of that information is documented. So Supervisor Bjork, if you request an absentee ballot, we will track you. We will say that your ballot was issued on this date. We received it back in the office on this date, and then on election day, we can, we can show that you were issued an absentee ballot. So if you came to try to vote on election day, and you had already submitted an absentee ballot, the Badger Book would prevent you from being able to vote twice. It's a really nice, quick, efficient system to be able to check that. It's also to say that people with forty-seven days before a general election where there's federal offices, some people forget that they requested an absentee ballot, right? That can easily happen. I had a clerk who said, "I think I voted already." I'm like, "Oh, you didn't." But it does, it is a long time before an election, and so people can forget. So the Badger Book is a nice way to say, "Oh, you weren't issued an absentee ballot," remember Betty? And Betty went, "Oh, yeah, back in September." But it is a long time before the election. So the Badger Book helps us track that and make sure that people are only getting one ballot. One voter, one ballot, one vote.
Well, and you can also check in online and see if you voted.
Yes, so all of that is uploaded as well. So before, after an election, if you were using a paper poll book, we would have to go through and we would have to manually click every single voter in Dunn County. And after the last general election in two thousand and twenty-two, it took us seven and a half weeks to click all those eighteen thousand voters, and whether they voted in person or whether they voted absentee. Now with Badger Books, we're able to upload all that information the Thursday after the election, so people can see that their participation on election day or by absentee ballot was tabulated and counted. So it's a, it's a very efficient system that way.
Supervisor Headland.
Yeah, just wondering, Andrew. I had a meeting the other night where people from a number of counties on that board were there in an election. This information or information about threats came up. And one of the clerks who's on the board said that she had lost a number of her participants because she wondered if the rhetoric wasn't maybe a little too scary. And they just said, "No, I remember when we passed cupcakes out at the, you know." And, and now you're, we've got to be worried about, you know, somebody coming in, and, and it virtually has scared off some of, you know. Are, are we, are we, you think we're good to go as far as numbers?
I, I check with the clerks pretty frequently on the number of poll workers and what they have. Most, everyone in Dunn County, all thirty municipalities, feel pretty good. They've got their schedules put together. We have seen some people who, over the years, have dropped off because of increased threats. But we luckily are able to replace them. We have a lot of great volunteers here in Dunn County. We're willing to step up and serve our democracy. So we're very fortunate that we haven't had those issues that some of the other counties have.
Supervisor Breslin, you've come off mute. Did you have a question?
Yes, I do. Thank you very much. First, I want to echo what Supervisor Bjork said. Excellent report. Question, do we have in Dunn County the absentee drop boxes? And if so, what are their locations? That's first question.
Okay, the, yes. So there was a court ruling in two thousand and twenty-two that said drop boxes could no longer be used to return an absentee ballot. There was a new court ruling in two thousand and twenty-four that said that drop boxes were able to be reinstated. It is up to the municipal clerks on whether they wanted to use the Dropbox. There have been several municipal clerks that, when absentee ballots would be put out before, when there was a muzzle on the use of drop boxes, they would actually cover up the Dropbox. Drop boxes can oftentimes be used for water payments, tax bills, anything like that at a municipal level. But during an absentee ballot period, they would actually wrap the Dropbox and not allow it to be used. Several clerks have allowed those to be used again. There are only four drop boxes currently in Dunn County. The main one that it's used is in the city of Menominee. There's one in the town of Dunn. There's one in the village of Boyceville, and there is one in there's, there's one more Supervisor Breslin, and I'm blanking on where it is. But there's, there's four. So there are currently only four drop boxes in Dunn County that are being used.
Perfect. Second question. You went through and had a slide on how all of the election materials are being handled at, at the, your office. Looked fantastic, looked very secure. Regarding the cast vote records, which are not housed in Dunn County, how are those transmitted or sent to Command Central in St. Cloud, Minnesota?
Sure. So Supervisor Breslin is discussing Command Central, which is the election entity that we use for our tabulators and our programming of those tabulators. There are two different voting systems that Command Central allows are approved in the state of Wisconsin. One is called the Image Cast Evolution, or the ICE machines, which gets very confusing because it sounds like we're gonna have like a, you know, concession stand. But the ICE machine, or there's what's called an ICE X. An ICE X is more of a digital machine. ICE Xs are able to produce a cast voter record, which, if you've ever seen one, is a series of, like, here's the offices, here's the ballots, here's the, the ones that are associated with each vote of each ballot. It's very, very long and very long and complex. The ICE machines actually, that we use in Dunn County, don't produce a cast voter record. It's typically used for information that is transmitted via a secure server on election night. So the ICE machines that we use in Dunn County don't actually have a cast voter record that's even able to be produced. After the election is over, when the clerks bring back all of their materials, one of the things that they bring back is the, what's called the media. It's basically the, the brains of the tabulator to be able to count all of the ballots and the offices that are associated with that ballot. That's kept in our office safely and secure for twenty-two days. Then that information is returned to Command Central for their safe storage. They can download all of that information, keep it in their safe, secure facility in St. Cloud, Minnesota, and then oftentimes will reprogram the same media to be used for a future election.
Thank you very much, Andrew. Excellent job.
You're welcome. No problem.
Anyone else? Okay.
Thank you.
Reports of departments, information technology. Hey, Dan, you get to come up and stand in front of the room again.
So I, yeah, so IT staff report, so your, well, annual report. You can see the report is in your materials. I'm sure everybody read all of that. It's nice and short this month. So wanted to just kind of go over a few things here. So our IT team supports about seven hundred and fifty user accounts in the county. We don't have that many employees, but we actually have that many accounts. You know, you guys kind of count as part of that. And and then we do now, this is something new. If you remember this from a couple of years ago, we are supporting the city of Menominee in some ways, so the, their initial calls to, for problem tickets come directly to our offices, and we kind of assist them as a first-level response. And it's been going pretty well. We've been gradually adding on different departments of departments in the, in the city over the last year. Been working out really well. We've heard some good news from, from the city on that as well. We have five hundred and ninety-two workstations plus and then eighty-two at the city and two hundred and twenty-four mobile devices. This is kind This is kind of the org chart for our, uh, department. So the IT division, part of administration oversees the land information office. We have, uh, the digital media and communications specialists, and we have the, kind of the core IT function over here. Um, so, uh, as most of you know, and you've already heard me talk a lot today, uh, uh, I also have the role of assistant county manager, and along with that, um, uh, requires a lot of our staff to kind of take on some new and additional duties, and, uh, and they do a wonderful job of being able to support that as I am pulled in different directions as well. So as part of that, uh, and because you already got to listen to me, I had Jake Ritchie, who's our, uh, um, information technology manager. So Jake is, is new this year. If you knew Luanne Domes, uh, Jake took over for Luanne. And, uh, I asked Jake if he would put together a presentation on one of the areas that we, uh, are gonna focus on this year, uh, for this presentation. So I'm gonna leave you to Jake and just to let you know, he's a, he's the one that really is making things happen as I get run in different ways, so.
Uh, yeah. Quick introduction, Jake Ritchie, I've been with the county since two thousand and sixteen. Uh, it's been kind of a big, pretty big changes with the county and how we operate over the years. Dan coming on board has been great for us. Um, and one of the reasons we're putting this presentation together is it's, October is Cyber Security Awareness Month. Um, and we want to go over a couple of the tools that we're currently using. One of them was approved, uh, two thousand and twenty-three in the budget, and we just got it up and running this year. Uh, Arctic Wolf. Um, and this is a tool, it's called, uh, Security Information and Event Management System. And basically what it is, you can read that if you want, but it's basically a collector for all of our logs and all of our endpoints and everything in the county. And this is an important tool for us because, um, we did have a security incident back in two thousand and seventeen, and what we learned from that is when a virus got in, it was able to spread between systems throughout the county relatively easy. And it was a very manual process of going to different systems, trying to figure out what, what happened and how, how it happened. And yet, at the end of the day, we never truly figured out what had happened. Ultimately, we got it fixed, we got the systems patched, everything came back up online, and we were able to kind of quarantine and finally get it deleted, uh, get it deleted. Um, but that's a pretty big gap from two thousand and seventeen until now. Um, this tool essentially would, would allow us to collect all the logs from all the systems into a single point. And the other advantage of using Arctic Wolf is that it's not just the county IT that now reviews it. Arctic Wolf gives us a team of, of security people that help us analyze and review the logs. So during an outbreak or during some type of event, like this ever happens again, um, we would have better reporting, better tools, better logging to be able to log in and look to see where the attack came from, how we're going to fix it, what we can do to remediate it, and going through a couple of slides here, we'll go through those. Oh, point over there, okay. Uh, this is a quick snapshot. Um, so in the United States, this is, uh, the last seventy-two hours, we had fifty thousand failed login events. Uh, that's a lot of login events. Most of these are coming from Russia and China. People trying to log into your account, happens all the time, it's not super unknown. And fifty thousand events are obviously a lot for us to watch and monitor, we can't do it ourselves. So Arctic Wolf helps us kind of analyze those logs and make a determination on what's really going on. The good news is with Dan coming on board, one of our first security initiatives was to get MFA set up. So even if someone does steal your password and is able to log into your account, MFA should block them from signing in because it's that second factor. I know we've had that set up for all the county supervisors. The highway guys love it. It's, uh, it's good. It's, it's a good security measure that we desperately need. Um, this is, oh, boy, didn't realize how small this is gonna be. Andrew, sorry, this one's for you. Uh, this is an example of a security event that was a false positive. Um, but we got a report, and this is a successful login, so these ones are a bit more suspicious. The IP address that this came from was from Iceland. I believe you were in Iceland that week and signed it, not, not saying you did anything wrong, but that gives us an event of what happened to say, hey, this is abnormal, why is this person is in Iceland? And we don't usually know and we don't track when people go on vacation, so don't worry about that.
I mean, I went working.
Oh, yeah, oh, I, okay. So this is just an example of a ticket that would come through that would be like, ooh, is this, is this, what's going on? So we do some investigating to figure out, okay, yes, he was in Iceland, okay, that's fine. Um, so not an issue, but just an example of what, what our dashboard looks like when these events come through. Uh, this is another example, um, this one's actually, uh, a test from IT ourselves. Um, we spun up a Linux system that people use, it's called Kali Linux. It's basically a penetration testing tool that a lot of developers and people will use to attack networks or find vulnerabilities. Uh, the second we turned it on and connected to our network, Arctic Wolf sends us an email saying, hey, there's a Kali Linux box on your network. Oh, okay, we didn't know that. We were testing some security vulnerabilities that we were doing ourselves, so that was kind of nice to see when that came through. Uh, the next one, uh, this one actually just happened a couple of weeks ago. I blocked out the name. I should have done that on yours, Andrew, sorry. Uh, this one was from, uh, the Sheriff's Department. It was a phishing link, and this one was kind of hard to deter because someone's email had actually gotten hacked from a remote agency that the Sheriff's Department works with regularly. And the email had come through and it contained a malicious link. Uh, this link uh, goes to a website that looks like this, which most of us hopefully know that that doesn't look legitimate. Uh, if you click on that link, it'll redirect you to a website in Russia. The good news is our firewalls did prevent that link from going anywhere. And Arctic Wolf told us like, hey, someone in your network clicked on this link, we don't think this is legit. So we worked with the end user, we got the system kind of quarantined, made sure that they, they didn't download anything, and we were okay to go. So when you think about security, it's an onion, it's multiple layers. Um, so if our antivirus didn't catch it, hopefully our web filter did. Sometimes our firewall will prevent you from going to a suspicious layer, and that's kind of the key to IT and how security operates, is you gotta have multiple layers of protection. Secure, uh, Arctic Wolf is just that tool that is itself multiple layers of protection, but it's not the only tool that we utilize. Um, so going back to this email that had come through, uh, this was a phishing attempt ultimately. And we send out phishing information or phishing, uh, campaigns monthly that goes out to everyone. I'm sure you guys have seen them. Um, says here forty-five percent of the cyber attacks come from phishing attacks. It is the most effective way that attackers get into your networks. So that's why we're always sending out emails and trying to get our own people to click on them. Because if you do click on it, as you know, if you've seen it, it sends you a little training video on what you should have done and why you shouldn't have clicked on it. Uh, IT falls for these all the time too, so don't feel too bad. Uh, we test ourselves. Um, so this is just a quick dashboard from that simulation. Um, it shows here on the blue line that the industry average is about sixteen percent, uh, and we are below that. So that's good to see. Ideally, we want this percentage, you know, as low as we can get at ten percent isn't too bad. I'd say we're doing all right. There's a little bit of a jump here, and, you know, sometimes we'll change up the campaigns that we're sending out and how aggressive they are and, you know, different things like that, so. I think that's, yeah, that's all I got. Any questions on that?
Supervisor Burnt, hang on a second, let me get your mic.
All right. Chairman, um, so I was one of the few people who went, uh, and attended the Wisconsin Counties Association Conference down on the cross. And one of the workshops that they had involved, um, the cybersecurity plan, um, or the emergency management, I think, when an attack happens, what those procedures are.
CRT, Cyber Response Team, in Madison, yep.
Um, could, are you able to speak about what, I think it's kind of on a higher level, what the steps that you guys take for the county should, or I guess some plans that you have in place should an attack happen?
Sure, yeah, um, we've been working on through the COOP-CAR, uh, Cooperative Plan. Um, it's kind of depends on the severity of the attack, what type of the attack is and what gets taken down in the network, but it's ultimately trying to contain and manage whatever attack vector it came in on. Um, are you asking about like a, a specific incident or just in general on how we would handle it? Yeah, it all depends, um. I don't know.
Yeah.
It.
Yeah, it, it, it truly does depend on the severity of those incidents and whether we need to involve our, uh, insurance company or, or, or the cyber response team, of which we do have, uh, four members, Jake and, uh, Jake, Chris, Matt, and Randy are all certified members of the, um, cyber response team, the state cyber response team. So what that means is they've gone through specific trainings to be able to do that, and if there is an incident in, in the state of Wisconsin, there's essentially a volunteer, they will put a call out, anybody want to go out and help? And so if there's an incident, we have lots of, uh, professionals throughout the, throughout the state, multiple counties, state agencies, cities that are all certified to be able to do that. So if there were an issue in Dunn County, we can call on the state response team to get boots on the ground here in Dunn County, helping with an incident.
Yep. Yeah, and we also have, um, regular backups. We also replicate all of our mission-critical systems out to an off-site data center at CVTC. Uh, we have offline backups in a rotation that's called AirGap. So if the entire network does get hit and takes all of our systems offline, we do have a, a gap of systems that are not connected to the network, so those we could use to recover from, so. Um, does that make sense?
Supervisor Larry Bjork.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I already asked Dan this one time, and I, I think I've got it right, but I'm not sure. Um, the, to log on, you know, I get this Microsoft, uh, Outlook that sends me to my little push-button thing when you.
Two-factor, yep, that's the two-factor, yep.
Yeah. What are you guys sending me that is so vital that you have to go through all these security steps? Or, I mean, I mean, what, what's the deal?
Yeah, so, so Jake shared that, that scenario, the, of the phishing attempt that, that had, uh, been clicked on within the county. And the reason that that was clicked on is because that person received an email from someone they knew. And they knew they worked with, and it seems like legitimate, right? So if I receive an email from Supervisor Larry Bjork that says, hey, Dan, check out this new document that I saw at WCA, right? I'm gonna look at that, I'm gonna see that that came from Supervisor Larry Bjork's email account, and I'm gonna say, oh, Larry sent me something. If your account gets compromised, that could be anybody. That doesn't have to be you that is doing that. So it isn't so much that we're sending you secure things, it's that somebody can pretend to be you, and then now everybody is going to be trusting that it was you, but it's not.
Doesn't seem to be a, uh, a reliable time. I mean, you know, sometimes it lasts for four or five days, sometimes it lasts for one day, or if I just not keeping track of how often it comes up.
Eight days.
They.
What now?
You have to re-authenticate every eight days. Yeah, if, we're, we're nice if you just stay in Dunn County, so the computers for people in Dunn County don't have to do that while, while you're on premises. Um, but if you're remote or if it's on your phone, every eight days is how often you would get that.
I only do it on a, on a table, uh, computer.
Yep.
And it isn't eight days, it's like two days, three days, one day.
Yep.
You have to, you know, and I'm getting good at it, but you gotta make sure you got enough lights on so you can read the six-number thing and put it in. And, you know, for the first month, I was trying to read the numbers upside down, but, okay.
Yeah, there's no Ls.
Supervisor Burnt. Um, I think if I can speak to you, Larry, about, uh, at least my history with, um, technology, that a lot of computers nowadays and internet service providers are starting to get better at, like reshuffling what your IP address is, um, periodically, and so it all depends on, there's a lot of factors that they're trying to make sure that your presence isn't a reliable, oh, that number is Larry Bjork, it's, oh, that number could be you one week, and then the next day, it's somebody, they give it to somebody else and they give you a completely new one. Um, so that's probably what is happening, is that, that happens, and so it's just detecting that change and telling you to.
In translation, that's your internet service provider. Um, the address they have for you is temporary, and sometimes it changes. And so the county computers think that you are moving or that you have changed devices.
Correct, yeah, most people don't get static IP addresses anymore, is what you're referring to. So it'll, your ISP will probably change its IP every couple of days or weeks. And if you switch between using, going to different areas with your laptop, it'll do the same thing. It'll say you're on a different network. If you do move your laptop, it'll, it'll make you re-authenticate then as well.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, you're off the hook, run for the hills. Uh, Corp Counsel, Nick.
Thank you, and, uh, good evening. I, uh, even, uh, included in your packet for this evening is a report that I did that outlines all of the things that we do in the office. Um, as you all know, maybe some of you forgot, I don't know. I'm retiring in January. Um, I believe in the office in good hands, though. Um, you hired a good guy to take over and be Corporation Counsel, and we're enjoying working with Jim. Um, so I, I just want to say, uh, for almost thirty years now, I've worked for Dunn County in the Corporation Counsel Office. We have regular court hearings that are sprinkled all throughout the week for involuntary mental commitments, guardianships, protective placement, child support, uh, and all other kinds of hearings. Um, we have filings, uh, that we make regularly in bankruptcy cases in federal court, um, bank foreclosures, sometimes, uh, the county will have a lien on property. Sometimes it's just a speeding ticket, uh, sometimes it's something different, we file in those. Um, we are, our legal secretary, Beth, who's extraordinary, um, often arranges for psychiatric and psychological evaluations for people who have been detained under Chapter Fifty-One, uh, so she's got lists of doctors and the receptionists in their offices, and she works her magic and we get all our stuff done in time for court. Uh, we have office work, drafting, reviewing, negotiating, advising departments, uh, working with human resources on employment law issues, meetings and phone calls with staff, members of the public, and we do, and we uh, receive and process claims that are made against the county. Uh, and we do all of this and so much more, uh, in support of all of the programs and responsibilities of the county government that you, uh, the county supervisors, um, establish. I always tell people that working in the Corporation Counsel Office is, or the Corporation Counsel Law Office, if you will, is the most interesting and diverse and occasionally frustrating general practice of law that exists. We cover everything, animals at the fair, employment law, labor law. Um, right now, I'm working on a, um, an appeal filed by someone who applied for variance that was denied, and, uh, so now it's in the circuit court and I have to file a brief and, and write a brief. It's, it's really everything, pretty much everything that we end up doing. Uh, and I've enjoyed it all. And when I add into it all the great people that I've worked with over the years, both staff and elected officials, supervisors, constitutional officers, I have to say that I've quite enjoyed my time here. You'll, you'll be seeing more of, uh, Jim McMenamy, um, as we move towards my retirement, which will be in January. Uh, and I, again, I just want to reiterate, I really think you're in good hands. Uh, we're working together, um, and I'm bringing him in and showing him how to do things. He's taken over things already. Um, he's working on stuff I don't even know about. Um, I mean, I know he's working on it, but I'm not involved, and it's all working out good, and you're gonna be well taken care of. Uh, so I just, that, this is my last annual report, and so I wanted to add the extra thanks in there and, and cut out the twenty-five-minute slideshow. So anyway, that's my report. If anyone has questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them or answer them.
Thank you, Nick. Uh, Supervisor Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I've been fairly.
I've been fairly, I'm fairly new to the board, this being my start of my second term. But, uh, I, I just want to say thank you for all your service. Um, we, we did work, uh, prior to this on, on some projects, but, uh, um, just very impressive how you handled your business, you know, and I'm going to miss you and good luck to you. And I don't know if a round of applause is appropriate or not, but here's one from me anyway. So.
Yeah, thanks. That appears to be it. That was a nice valedictory.
Valedictory, Nick.
My turn to run. Yeah. And I mean, you get to run further and faster with, uh, your retirement coming up here. All right, uh, Facilities, Scott.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, I kind of dropped the bomb on my report, you know, report and didn't get it out in the packet because I was thinking it was November for my annual report and it's October. So here it is. So I put together, uh, kind of a short and sweet report. Um, basically a option or a, a version of last year's so that, um, the new members of the county board can figure out what Facilities does. So that's how this works. There we go. So in, um, 2022, Facilities became, uh, their own department, aside from being Public Works. Cause at that time, Public Works was comprised of Facilities, Transit and Highway altogether. Um, we dissolved the Public Works Department and Facilities went on their own, along with Transit on their own, Highway on their own. Uh, we have been doing great on our own without the other ones. I think it's working out well without the Public Works Department. Uh, so we take care of Dunn County's buildings and parks and grounds. Uh, there's many, many, uh, buildings, grounds that give us lots of challenges. We have a great staff that take care of these items. Uh, so here in our infrastructure is, is what we have. Uh, the facilities, the parks, the central transportation vehicles, work with shooting ranges to, uh, keep those going. Uh, buildings are the Dunn County Government Center here, the Neighbors of Dunn County, the Judicial Center, the Rec Park, Transfer Station has been handed over to us a few years back. Uh, we also work on highway shops, the Menominee Shop and the Outlying Highway Shops. Keeps all of our guys busy going. This is, uh, some details for, uh, any of you people that like your data. Um, the square footage of buildings, uh, grounds, the acreage and miles of sidewalks. Uh, it's purely an estimate. There, there has been some taken away and some added on those. This is our team, uh, consists of myself, an administrative specialist, one facilities maintenance specialist that is at the neighbors, three facilities technicians, three facility workers, three part, or three full-time custodians and two part-time custodians at the neighbors. Currently, these are our staff members. Uh, we also have two seasonal workers that I have mowing in the parks. And I've had the same ones come back for the last few years. It's actually a married couple and it works out quite well. They're very dependable. They get the job done fast. Don't have to worry about the parks being mowed because they are taken care of. Do they go too fast? Yep. Don't keep pushing the button, right?
I don't know. The technology wants us to go home.
Go back. And one more, one more. You're not doing anything? Okay. Don't do anything. I'll get there. Yeah, gotcha. We'll get there. There. All right. Job duties for the staff. Um, responsible for maintenance repair of all the buildings and grounds, of course, which I told you already. Uh, facility workers and technicians bring various skills to the department, which really helps us in do some of the projects that we can do, uh, in-house instead of contracting out. Um, the, the staff, facility staff, uh, facility workers and technicians also take part in an on-call rotation for the neighbors so that there's somebody available, uh, 24/7, 365 for the maintenance at the neighbors to keep that facility running, running well. Um, there are staff that also get called in at the jail on occasion. As the jail, you know, being a 24-hour facility, there's times where they need somebody to come in there. The daily activities are, um, you know, watching over the workings of the mechanics of the building, doing the preventive maintenance, making sure everything's running properly, repair anything that comes up that needs to be taken care of, um, that they see. Uh, we have a work order system that's electronic that is emailed to the staff. They work on those. Um, other staff in other departments submit their work orders and we get the stuff done, whether it's, uh, moving, uh, offices, moving desks, furniture, stuff like that, um, to pretty much everything. Uh, it's, it's amazing what we get asked to do, but we help out with. Facilities Department really provides a great service. And all of the facility staff are continually getting compliments on how polite they are, how friendly they are, they are, and how helpful. That's really great to hear. This is one of the projects, uh, was done last year. This is the ENS Department. Um, ENS, uh, was not given a reception area when this building was put together. It was not discussed. The department had an open door at the end of the hallway there that people could walk straight into their suite. And there were no reception counters or nor secured doors or anything like that. So my staff built the walls, put in the doors and created a reception area for them. So now they have a secured area with reception glass. So people talk to them through glass. Uh, it's, it's a lot better, a lot more secure for those people in that department. Uh, here are our county parks. We have 11 parks that we mow. Some have very little to mow, others have a lot. But we do, we do some mowing at least in 11 parks. There are 15 parks total, three shooting ranges, and then we also mow for the highway shops during the summer. Uh, the main highway shop, Boysville, Colfax, Annual Galley. That helps out, uh, highway staff. They keep their facilities looking really nice and they appreciate that. Um, here are the partnered organizations that we work with, um, for the, the ranges, the, you know, countywide, the rec park, um, any of these things. Uh, the only thing that's on that one should be removed is Town of Sand Creek and Myron Park Campground. Cause obviously we gave that back to the Town of Sand Creek. But, um, they're still on there as we've worked together with them over the years. So they deserve a mention. Uh, they were still on there. Um, a lot of these clubs have, uh, fundraisers. They donate their time. They have members that donate their time. They do a lot of work and they end up putting a lot of money into our parks, which really helps out, uh, with Dunn County. So, um, any questions? Or feedback?
Uh, Supervisor Shackleton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've got a little bit of feedback. I was just going to commend Scott on, I had a situation up in my district at the boat landing. Um, the, uh, Lambs Creek Boat Landing where a lot of people were parking where they shouldn't be parking. It was blocking where we can launch the boat, so on and so forth. And I actually got into a little altercation with a fellow there that thought he was right to park there and wouldn't allow people to launch their boat. So I called Scott, said, Scott, can we put up some no parking signs? Get these lines painted and stuff. And he met me down there. I showed him what I thought needed to happen. And I thought he did a great job and I appreciate you, um, doing that and getting that done for me and for the district. Thank you.
Thank you. It's great to hear. You're welcome. Good.
Thank you, Supervisor Shackleton. Supervisor Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I too want to, uh, um, thank Scott and his staff, um, our paths have crossed many times the last few years. And, uh, they just do a fabulous job. And, and what, what's most impressive is the timely manner they do it and with the professionalism that they do it. So thank you.
Supervisor Morehouse.
Yeah, I might as well pile on. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to thank you, Scott, for, you know, occasional oddball requests like cars set aside for the Department of Human Services. And I just wanted to compliment you. The building looks great. Thank you.
That appears to be it, except for, uh, thank you. You've always been very prompt with everything I've needed. Oh. Yeah, your mic has completely cut out and we are currently, uh. It's a sign, Scott. Yeah. It is. Yeah, crashed. Okay. Um, item 10, consideration reports, resolutions and ordinances to the County Board from the Executive Committee. Uh, item A, 2024 budget adjustment, CGC, DHS, SHF, PHD. Lot of three letters. Uh, y'all are familiar with these. I need a motion in a second. Supervisor Morehouse moves. Supervisor Steen seconds. Does anyone want more details about this particular budget adjustment? All right. Seeing none, we are prepared to vote. It is of course, a, uh, two-thirds roll call.
So if you tap the screen on your, um, microphone, it will activate that so you can, uh, cast your vote. Um, while they were, are doing that, uh, let's, those supervisors joining us online, Supervisor Breslin, how do you vote?
Yes.
Supervisor Breslin votes yes. Uh, Supervisor Story, how do you vote?
Yes.
Oh, there she is. Yeah, there she is. And Supervisor Willsey.
Yes.
Supervisor Willsey votes yes. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Motion carries. Onto, uh, sorry. My allergy meds are, have kicked out. So my brain is a little bit fried. Um, B, ordinance pending, uh, the Land Information Council's second reading. Uh, you got a brief outline about what, what this was last time. I think it's pretty clear. If anyone has specific questions, we will absolutely endeavor to get those answered. All right. Seeing none, we are ready to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. C, ordinance designating the official newspaper for the county. First reading, I need a motion in a second. Supervisor Steen moves. Supervisor Headland seconds. Um, last Supervisor Kinnear, who has been, this has been a crusade of his to get changed, is not here to give you the quick rundown. Essentially, um, we are switching to a paper with much higher in-county subscriptions and, uh, better in-county coverage in general. Well, we, we may be switching. That is up to you. Uh, does anyone have any questions about that? Okay, that's first reading. We will come back to that at the next meeting. Um, yeah, first reading. At least that's what it says on my agenda. Um, item 11, consideration reports, resolutions and ordinances coming to the County Board from the standing committees. A legislative committee, uh, resolution approving our 2024, 2025 legislative agenda. I need a motion in a second. Supervisor Steen moves. Supervisor Hagan seconds. Uh, speaking to the motion, Supervisor Steen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, every, every year we, uh, task the committees, uh, to, uh, canvas their staff and bring any items that they think are worthy of being forwarded to the Wisconsin Counties Association. And, uh, this is the result of that. I would urge everybody to pass it. It's a good, uh, it, it's a more orderly process for things to get done than it used to be prior to the, uh, formation of a legislative committee. So any questions?
Uh, Supervisor Larry Bjork.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I thought there was something in here last month in, in the run-up, run-up to this that involved, um, funds that the state has been using on, um, what is it? Ag hospitality or, you know, supporting the wedding barns and things like that. Wasn't there some discussion on that?
Uh, two years ago, we had, uh, attached to the legislative agenda, a request for the state legislature to reconsider, uh, the way that they had set up the new, the new legislation for wedding barns.
Right.
Because there's a good chance it'll put a number of them out of business. Um, I, this, that, I.
Ag tourism is, is the term I was looking for. I thought, I thought there was discussion on ag tourism that they had in the past, uh, funded ag tourism and that we were asking them to, to continue doing that.
Um, no, I don't believe so.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right, uh, then we are ready to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Uh, well, wait a minute, wait a minute. It's no, Mr. Chairman. Uh, it is included in here. Item seven. Community resources and tourism support allocation of state funds to encourage and develop rural and agricultural tourism. So that is included then. Is that right?
Uh, if it's, if it's on the sheet, certainly.
Yeah.
Uh, but we didn't have any discussion on it at the meeting.
Okay. Well, I was, okay, I just picked up.
Alrighty. Thank you, Supervisor Bjork. Uh, two, resolution supporting the expansion of Medicaid.
This is the one that I was.
Note the additional background information in the board packet. There's a bunch of that. Supervisor Morehouse moves. Supervisor Steen seconds. Is there any speaking to the resolutions? Supervisor, uh, Supervisor Morehouse is ahead of you on this one.
Well, I would request that we have Supervisor Morehouse speak on it. Thank you.
There you go.
And here she is. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Chairman Steen. Um, I will remind the board that this, um, has appeared in our legislative agenda, including the one that we just passed for the last four years. And I would like to acknowledge the work of Dr. Alexander Hall, who is a member of, a citizen member of the Health and Human Services Board, who has done considerable research about the effects of an expansion of Medicaid in Dunn County, including the effect, uh, the fact that it will benefit, directly benefit a thousand people. And there's, there's lots of information, uh, provided, uh, presented by Dr. Hall in your packet. So I won't go into any detail. Um, this is, this is needed. It will benefit, uh, individuals in the county. It will benefit communities and system-wide. It's very likely that this would have prevented the closure of HHS Pervia. So I urge your support.
Thank you, Supervisor Morehouse. Yeah, it's a great report. It's absolutely worth a read. It'll, it'll take you a bit, but it's worth a read. Any further speaking? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Uh, 11C, 11A3, sorry. Resolution supporting increased state funding for medical assistance and community support programs. Need a motion in a second. Supervisor Steen, Supervisor Burnt. Um, I think it's pretty clear, but we can absolutely answer questions if you got them. Supervisor Steen, did you have a, oh, you're just being ready to answer questions?
Yeah.
Perfect. Anybody? All right, then we're ready to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, that takes us to, uh, 11B, which was the Facilities Committee Resolution, which we have dealt with. Um, C, Committee on Administration, uh, resolution adopting the 2025 pay grid and other pay-related items. I need a motion in a second. Supervisor Headland, Supervisor Jetson, um, Supervisor Headland, do you want to speak to the resolution? Or do you want to? Supervisor Headland, do you want to speak to the resolution or do you want to just be available to answer questions? Which should you prefer?
For them to our human resources department. So are there any pertinent questions?
Doesn't look like it. It looks like everybody did their homework. Always good to see. That makes us ready to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Result, two, resolution adopting the 2025 health benefit premiums, much the same, and I need to motion in a second. Supervisor Headland, Supervisor Bashan. Same thing, Vaughn or Jenna will be happy to answer questions if you've got them. Supervisor Steen?
Yes, if Jenna would be kind enough. I've spent my whole life being an employee, not an employer. And when I see the cost of the individual insurances going up, that strikes me as being cost shifting rather than solving some problem. But I, I wasn't on that committee and I know that Jenna and everybody's worked very hard. I'd like for you to explain what you're trying to accomplish on the county level, please. Thank you.
Come on up.
I think probably the briefer version if we
I will do my absolute best, I promise. Supervisor Steen did graciously give me a warning that that he might be asked for more details. So I was able to kind of put together this information to give you a visual because I think it's really hard to just fumble through it and and not have things to look at. So what we are proposing for 2025 with regard to health insurance premium changes really boils down to, well, overall, we're seeing an increase in the premiums that we would need to be able to fund our anticipated expenses for 2025. So with that anticipated increase, we sat down and we're looking at how we could both or how we could absorb that additional cost and what that might look like, right? So what you see here, and I know that's kind of small and blurry. I did it kind of quickly, but really the biggest difference is on this plan one. For a single, we are decreasing the county contribution to that by 1%. So basically, the employees on that plan are going to pay 1% more of the premium than they do this year. And then on, on plan one for the family, we are proposing to decrease the county contribution by 2%. So that means the employees will pay 2% more towards the premium than they do this year. We are not proposing to change any allocations on this second plan option. The second plan option is the higher deductible option, the higher max out-of-pocket option. So that is the more high-risk plan. But with that decrease in the county contribution on the plan for the families up here, that will result in about a $56 increase per month for the employee premiums. And we recognize that that is significant for families, right? So what we wanted to do, and actually, we had a meeting this morning with our highway group specifically, but we will have this information available for everyone. I gotta wait a second. I'm getting kicked off. Oops. Just to provide them some information about what options they can weigh for 2025. If they're on that plan one, most cases, they could realistically consider plan two. And here's why. A few cost-saving benefit offerings that we have, and I think we've talked about this before, I won't spend a lot of time. We have the reform membership that provides primary care services to employees on our plan at little to no cost. We also have care navigation cash incentive. So this means if they shop for best value care, we will literally pay them a cash incentive for taking the extra steps to do that because it potentially saves the plan thousands. Okay, so we all know what a premium is, right? This is part of my presentation from earlier this morning. But to compare premiums overall, overall for the year, plan one would cost about $2,500 for the employees. Plan two for a premium would cost about $1,170 for the employees for the year. So obviously, you have a little bit lower deductible option here. You're going to pay a higher premium, pay a lower premium here. You're going to have a higher deductible, right? So what we are urging folks to consider, and I won't kind of, I won't go through all of this, but is to consider while both opening an HSA account, because both of our plan options are HSA eligible. That's an account that you can contribute pre-tax dollars to. And that's basically your savings for medical or dental or vision expenses throughout the year. So again, we have premium contribution that's going to get paid no matter what by the employee, whether they use the plan or not. Or they can consider an HSA contribution. So premium, money you pay, HSA, money you save, right? Now you're probably hearing my pitch from earlier today. So what we have been hoping to illustrate for employees that are currently on plan one is to consider moving from plan one to plan two and instead saving this amount in their own HSA. This is a way for them to take control over their own money, right? That premium payment is going out the door no matter what. So why not take the difference and put it into your HSA? And then if you don't need it, that continues to build over time. And an additional perk, once they turn 65, they can use that account for anything they want without penalty. So it's really like an additional investment account. If if an employee were to say, I can have no net increase to my premium deductions, and I think that's a concern for 2025, that would look like $737 that they can contribute to their HSA by going to plan two and not paying anything more than they pay now. So again, that's just this premium savings that they consider dumping into their HSA instead of it going out the window, whether they use the care or not. And then we also still have the ability for members to earn a $1,500 county contribution to their HSA. So that's almost $3,000 right there that they can have saved into their HSA just by moving or considering moving from plan one to plan two. So we do have an embedded deductible on the higher plan option. So that means if an individual hits $3,500, then the plan would would start to kick in in covering those expenses. So you can just see that almost 3,000 in an HSA is is getting pretty close to that individual embedded deductible. And hopefully, they've been saving into an HSA year over year, so they have more built than than just this, right? So then I went through a few scenarios and I'm going to speed this up. I think we all care the most probably about a worst-case scenario, right? On a good year, I'll just show you. On a good year, a year that only primary care is needed on plan two, at the end of the day, the employee is only going to pay $1,220.24 that includes their premium payments for the year. They were on plan one, they would pay $2,600 no matter what, just because of that high premium. So that's where we're just trying to urge them to consider saving their own money, right? But I think what what is, what the fear is, is what about the worst-case scenario? That max out-of-pocket on plan two is $10,000. That's significant, right? And so what that could look like if you had a kid that broke their arm and if you needed a knee ligament repair and you hit your annual max out-of-pocket for the family. At the end of the day, because of the HSA contributions that you're able to put in and the county contribution, as well as alethius incentives, that care navigation incentives, that cash payment that they could get for shopping for care at the end of the day is about $6,670 for the year. And on the plan one, which is a lower max out-of-pocket, it's actually only a difference of $187, all said and done. So again, this is exactly what I walked through with one of our employee groups earlier today, just to try and illustrate that plan two might not be as scary as it looks and gives them more control over their own money and their own ability to save. We completely recognize that plan two is maybe not a fit for absolutely everyone. And we will continue to do our best to drive down costs as much as we can so that we can improve the plan for those folks that need the lower max out-of-pocket. But at the end of the day, I think what I would like for you to understand is that there is more to our plan than just the deductible and the max out-of-pocket and the premiums because we have primary care provided at little to no cost and the ability for folks to earn cash incentives by shopping for care. So although we recognize a $56 increase to a family premium, premium on plan one is significant, we truly feel that in a lot of scenarios, it would be more beneficial for employees to move to plan two and put more money away in their own account.
Thank you, Jenna. Any further questions? All right, you're off the hook.
Okay.
Seeing none, we are ready to vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Item D, planning, resources, and development committee ordinance rezone, GA to R1, Donald Luntz. Need a motion in a second. Supervisor Quinn and Supervisor Morehouse. I think rezones are another thing you've now seen a fair amount, fair number of. Does anyone have any specific questions? All right, seeing none, we are ready to vote. All in favor? Any opposed? All right. No, motion passes. Item 12, this is important. Our next meeting, which is budget, will be Tuesday, November 12, 2024. The Tuesday is key.
The law.
Yep. Seeing that I have nothing else, we are adjourned.